Okay, good evening everybody and welcome to the June tenth twenty twenty five meeting of the town board of the town of Newcastle. The board has been in executive session and I'd like to ask for motion to open the work session.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are going to start off with a discussion of uh cell coverage and possible cell towers. Uh I know that a while back we had talked about having Verizon here to a meeting um in April. Uh something got in the way of that, they were unable to do it and so we are still working with them and anticipate that they will at some point soon. And we wanted to update the public because we want to be absolutely transparent and follow through um and let you know that we are still working very hard on this. And um I just wanna thank everyone involved. I know that our town administrator has been very active, actively working with Verizon and um so I'll turn it over to Rob to give us um an update on where we are.
Sure. And uh we have Sabrina joining us online tonight. She's gonna help out a little bit. So uh just to give uh kind of a an update of of where we are now. We get a lot of complaints unfortunately about cell service in the town and what can we do about it. So a couple years ago, I think it was uh in March of twenty twenty three, we finally completed the um wireless master plan and that's where the town partnered with uh Westchester County's consultant. And they did a pretty um intensive study in outreach to residents here and study on uh coverage gaps and what people were interested in hearing, uh what people would be interested in in accepting to improve their service. And Sabrina, maybe you can just uh refresh what that study was all about. I looked up and she was on the phone. So Sabrina, I'm not sure if you just heard, but I I asked if you could just kinda rehash or refresh what we talked about during the wireless master plan study and kind of what came out of that.
Sure, so the wireless master plan study actually identified um areas in town
Sure, so the wireless master plan study actually identified um areas in town where we had very little service and also areas in town where we had too many people on one line,
very little service and so it's in town where we had too many people on one line,
if you will. So uh there was um uh lack of coverage in areas
so uh there was um uh lack of coverage in areas but also lack of or what we call congestion in other areas of town. but also lack of or what we call congestion in other areas of town.
Okay, so we we completed that study. It's been posted up on our website. It's available for um for any of the carriers to see anybody that's interested in coming into town and improving service here. Um that's available for them. So um we started to look at what's happened over the last couple of years because we've had people say that they have had better service in the past, that nothing changed. Their carrier didn't change, their location didn't change, and yet they're not able to make a phone call like they used to. So we started to look into why that would be happening. It's uh Sabrina mentioned, some of it is there's a lot more devices connected now than there ever has been in the past. I I'm pretty sure if everybody's like me, I I there's probably two or three devices in my house for each person in the house that are connected. And I'm sure everybody here is like that as well. So there's a lot more users uh connecting to the same uh same tower and uh the the bandwidth is being used up gre- at a greater rate. Um you also have that over time, the trees aren't getting smaller, they're growing. So if you had a tower that would reach um that would spread, all of a sudden now the trees are getting taller, it's more difficult for the signal to reach. And then the topo- topography of the town isn't great anyways, so you have these coverage gaps. And then what we talked to some of the carriers and what they've mentioned is that the changing technology, you know, in the past at the lower bands, um when you had like the three G in the lower bands there, the reach of the coverage was much greater than it currently is. So you had a while the service was slower and maybe not quite as reliable as the five G, you had a larger coverage area. Now most of the carriers, they've discontinued the lower bands and they're only using five G. But five G, the signal reach isn't as great, so you have to have more towers to connect to. And we haven't added those and haven't had the opportunity to add those. So that's one of the reasons why you may have had service at one point in time where you were able to connect to the three G or a four G and now we're onto five G and you're not able to connect as easily anymore. So uh over the last probably twelve months, we have been in contact with Verizon. Uh they approached us and they had identified a couple sites within town that they thought uh they're town-owned sites that they might be able to put a cell tower and improve service. And and you know, a couple things that went into that study, they were looking for property that the town owned because that was easier for them to negotiate directly with us rather than uh a private entity and then to come to the town for an application for the tower. So they were looking at town-owned property and they were looking at the coverage gap areas. So uh there were a couple properties that kind of fit the bill. The first one was the access was off Stoneaway and uh ultimately they decided not to pursue that one. Um it was the topography there wasn't great. I think it was uh there were some steep slopes issues and I think it just didn't reach. Uh it was kind of in a little valley and it it didn't reach as high as the other site that they liked. So that was not their preferred site. Uh the one that they have moved on to is off Old Lime Road and that's adjacent to Grafflin School. Um there are some concerns on that property. There's some wetlands. Uh there's some concern whether any of that property uh whether it's parkland or not. Um so Verizon's been out to the site three different times. They've done the wetlands delineation, they've done the survey. So they think they have a plan. They're getting close to being able to come and present to the public. They're not quite there yet. So um Sabrina or Lino, do you wanna add anything? We had a conversation last Friday that I think went well with uh with Verizon and we're getting close to being able to have them come and present.
No, that that's good, Rob. No, that's it. I mean basically, you know, we we need to look at the site just in terms of some there's some obviously some environmental things that we need to look at. But otherwise, yes, we're gonna ask them to come in and obviously give a presentation to the board at some point.
Sabrina, anything else that you wanna add?
No, I don't. Um you know, the uh the area that is adjacent uh to Grafflin School that they're looking at, that is a very old subdivision that was constructed in nineteen seventy five or approved in nineteen seventy five. It was um that section of that subdivision was developed as a conservation subdivision. Um so there's a lot of um history in that area regarding the piece of property that they're looking to uh site the tower on.
And I will add that one of the possible benefits to citing the tower there, uh I know the town's emergency services uses the cell service as a backup for their communication. And uh I know they're like everybody else, they have a coverage gap in that area. So uh Verizon would be able to cite some of the communications equipment for emergency services on this tower as well.
So that's the update we have right now. Um again, we'll continue to work with Lino is is uh joined the conversation with Verizon, so did Sabrina. So we're continuing to work with them and hopefully get a viable project that we can bring to the town.
Well, thank you, Rob. Um and Sabrina and Lino. Uh I guess one question that occurs to me is that since the problem started with the removal of the lower bands, the three and four G, instead of going through all of this trouble, since people were pretty um pretty well-served with the combination of five G and then the three G and low, you know, four G, couldn't they just put those back?
I don't have an answer to that question, Lino or Sabrina. I don't know.
I mean, these are not questions for you really.
Yeah. Yeah, I think with the.
But um these are the questions that I would ask them.
And when Verizon comes in, we've asked, I think they're gonna include an engineer. Um when they come in, they'll have a a couple different people here to present and an engineer will be one of them. So that would be a great question for them. Uh I imagine the three and four G was just older technology as well and and there may be a useful life of that equipment that that may have kinda, you know, it was one of those if if the equipment is starting to fail, they're not gonna replace it with older equipment, they'll replace it with newer equipment.
Yeah, but in some ways um it was more effective. The five G is faster, but it has lower coverage
Yeah.
and the lower bands are slower but wider.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, wider coverage. So I mean, they they seem to complement each other and seems to be pretty a pretty short-sighted um policy to remove those.
Yeah, from what I understand, it's it's kinda industry-wide. It's not confined to any one uh carrier in particular, but it's just what has happened in in the industry over the last few years.
Let's see.
I would just add for anyone listening at home, I just learned this um so maybe I'm behind. But if you go on airplane mode while you have access to Wi-Fi and you don't normally have cellular service, it by default will then go to the Wi-Fi and your cellular service works exponentially better. I'm not talking about FaceTime audio, I'm talking about your actual phone. So if you did not know that, which I did not know until yesterday, flip your phone to airplane mode when you're at home, if you have access to Wi-Fi and you can get a much better signal.
Okay. Is that right? So the Wi-Fi interferes somehow?
That's a great tip.
So by default, on the other way, if there is service at all, even if insignificant, your phone will go to grab that service.
Mm-hmm.
So you're gonna have bad service, but if you put on airplane mode, it'll flip to Wi-Fi and then you can use your regular phone over Wi-Fi.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Okay.
Tech tips to Jeremy.
Gonna try?
Very good.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
This message brought to you by.
Don't do drugs, kids.
Because another thing I would ask them, and this is something I've heard from from someone I know who is in in this business, there are small cells that I was told that could be placed on utility poles. So that is again, this is a question I would ask for them, so not a question for you. But um I would be curious to ask them about small cells that could be put on utility poles that are also five G but are smaller, you know, about the size of a of a cooler.
So Sabrina, we we did look at that a couple years back, right?
Okay.
And and what did we find when we looked at that?
Um we we found that even though that they seem to be small up in the air, that they require very large cabinets on the ground. Um so there just wasn't enough space in the areas where we needed them and they also have to pull off of the larger tower to boost their signal. So it doesn't really help us where we don't have service.
Okay, got it, got it.
And this location would eventually help us on one twenty
Cool to do it, okay.
If if the town chooses to go that route.
Yes, yes, it would, yes.
Where we all have a dead complete dead zone.
Right.
Heading towards uh H P N.
Right. And that's the location where we've gotten the most complaints, where people have absolutely no service.
It was, and that was part of what went into Verizon selecting the site is that it was the area where we would be able to gain the most coverage.
Right.
Um and definitely yeah, down one twenty there, coverage would increase.
Right. And what about downtown Chappaqua? Does it reach that far?
Uh I don't think it does. We'd have to, they will bring a coverage map. That's one of the things we asked them to do.
It's gotten way worse, sir.
And and I will, when we get the coverage map, I'll compare it to the coverage analysis that was done in the wireless studies. So we're guaranteed to really have a good understanding of what we um what benefits from a coverage perspective or or a congestion perspective we will have.
Right, and and maybe there are smaller towers that we could put on top of buildings or.
There could be. When they did the the master plan, Sabrina, there were several different opportunities, right? For several different designs of towers and and um.
There always is, and there always is. The design of the tower is really up to the host community.
There always is.
Yeah.
Right, I mean there might even be a small tower we could put on top of town hall if we ever, you know, have the proper uh infrastructure here to do it, which would cover just the downtown.
Yeah. I know they mentioned that building-mounted uh units were were part of what they could offer, but I don't know that they suggested any for our downtown area.
One one of the things I wondered about was uh with the renovation going on at the firehouse, have we explored that as a possibility?
We have, and it's it is not viable for them. Um I know that I think it was last summer, Vicki, when we had talked to when we had a couple complaints last summer, we did get ahold of a Verizon government representative. They said that was not feasible for them, that just the location, the designers did not work for them. Because I think the fire department even suggested that and offered that, but uh Verizon wasn't open to that.
Okay. Um I don't remember the reasons. Maybe the coverage wouldn't be sufficient from that location.
I think so. I think they could, yeah, I think that was it.
There there's a kind of a dip there.
Like to the valley?
Yeah.
It is in a valley.
Right.
Yeah, so our topography makes it really complicated.
And they aren't gonna.
Um.
Like the sidewalks.
Yeah. Any any other questions, anyone? Okay, well, it 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 is regrettable that um we haven't had a solution yet.
Can I just forward to an update?
I mean, it's not a town function. We can't provide cell service. So just want everyone to know that this is a private company and we can't really control them. But we are doing the very best that we can and um we, you know, they are being responsive at this point. I I also do want to thank the office of Senator Pete Harkam for helping us with this because I did have to to ask for assistance. Uh there was a point at which we were getting no response and so they helped us out and I wanna thank them publicly for that as well. Um so like I said, it is regrettable that we haven't had Verizon here yet, but we are going to have them here. And again, just wanted to let the public know what we've been doing in the background and we hope to have a solution for us soon.
And one thing, we had mentioned this before, I forgot to mention it when I was talking, um is that uh we had heard, you know, from some different complaints that maybe there were cell towers down and that was the reason service was poor. And the communications that I've had with the carriers that I have had, um they report that there is no service down. So I I talked to.
There are no towers down.
There are no towers down. So uh I talked to a couple different carriers and then also we uh a company that manages one of the towers in town and and they did not report or did not know of any service outages on their towers.
Right, it was a rumor that got legs um unfortunately, but people are just trying to find a reason why. Um all of a sudden they have no service when they did. So um so the explanation is in the getting rid of the lower bands and that's unfortunate.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's part of it. You have more more phones connected now too, more devices and that it's a kind of perfect.
Unbelievable.
Good suggestion.
Yep.
Right, and also the school district has a new had a new policy of one-to-one devices. So now all the kids have iPads and they're using them all day, which wasn't the case um maybe five years ago.
Yeah.
So that's a big change.
Yeah.
Um okay then, so that will conclude the discussion for now. But um Rob, do you anticipate, do you feel comfortable anticipating that they will be here? And then you're, you know, soon, maybe?
I think so. I I think.
We we hesitate to say a date because they haven't.
Yeah, I I wouldn't wanna give a date because we promised a date last time
Right.
and through no fault of our own, we weren't able to deliver. So I'd be, I would hesitate to give a date, but we're definitely much further down the road than we were in the past. The Verizon has assigned uh, they were using a third-party contractor in in the discussions before, they put a direct um kind of more senior manager at Verizon on this project itself. And we've now uh we've started to include their attorney as well as our attorney. So we're we're getting somewhere with it now.
Yeah, and again, the timing is also unfortunate because I wanted them to come when people were here.
Yeah.
So now we're headed into the summer. And so I'm hopeful they can come at our next meeting on June twenty fourth because people will still be here, but it's if it's past that,
Yeah, I agree.
then it'll be July and August and nobody's here. So I hate to wait, but sometimes it's better to do something well than to do it quickly. And we've been waiting a long time. So I would even suggest if um if there's talking July, August, that we postpone it until September.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, all right then. So let's uh let's move on unless anyone has any last last thoughts. Okay, okay, Rob, so let's go over the administrative items.
Uh.
Good night, both.
Thank you, Sabrina.
But thank you, Sabrina.
Good night, Sabrina.
Nice, Sabrina, thank you. We have a retroactive payment of claims uh from the thirtieth. Jeremy, we've got another vehicle we sold, a two thousand nine Ford Focus, fourteen hundred dollars.
Right.
Whoa.
Adding to the coffers.
Not much. Fourteen we didn't have before, ladies and gentlemen.
That was true.
Every dime counts.
We are looking for authorization to purchase anthracite and sand filter media. It's part of the water treatment uh process at the Millwood Water Treatment Plan. Uh the.
Fourteen hundred dollars worth?
Uh twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. So no, uh not not fourteen hundred dollars. Uh we have an authorization to purchase a Polar Tech A C machine down at the D P W repair shop. This isn't the actual uh cooling unit for the building. This is to uh repair and refresh uh air conditioning units in the vehicles that we have. Cost of that is eleven thousand four sixty-four. Uh we have the authorization to approve change orders number one and two. Uh that's for weatherproofing and uh weatherproofing for the uh central garage and the D P W administration office uh roof restoration, uh twenty-two hundred dollars and sixteen hundred sixty-two dollars respectively. We have the authorization to approve N C C M C's web services contract addendum. We do this each year um as part of N C C M C's contract. There are some fees that they pass through, they pay and then pass the cost through to the town. Uh these can include me uh Zoom fees for the year and and uh some of the other software fees for what they do for the e-alert system, et cetera. So as those prices change, uh the addendum in N C C M C's contract changes. That's what we're approving here. Uh we have the two tax cert proceedings that we heard uh from before, Millwood Realty and Gruber. Uh the board heard about two months ago, we uh approved C V A X uh Low Sap service reporting for the year. This is another step in the process uh authorizing uh I think the supervisor to sign the form. So this is the final step. Once this is approved and completed, uh C Z C V A K Low Sap service reporting for the year will be complete. Uh we have the authorization to enter into the contract with Wood Hollow Contracting for the E V charging charging units. Uh this is the rip and replace project, so we are replacing some older units that are not working and we're expanding the coverage in some locations. Uh some at the Chappaqua train station, at the Allen Place parking lot, at Getney Park eh and at Amsterdam, I think are all the uh locations these units are gonna be placed. Uh the total cost of this is a hundred and seventeen thousand. This is fully covered by the N I S R T A grant that we received. We have a banner request for William Ravis. Uh we do have the authorization to approve the S R O agreement with uh Chappaqua Central School District. That's a three-year agreement. Uh the school board approved that at their meeting last week. Uh we have an authorization to accept a cash bond agreement with W C E Real Estate Holdings for in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. We have the authorization to renew the annual service agreement with I Work Systems uh for the Department of Public Works. That is their software that tracks their uh their work orders. And uh finally, we have the authorization to award the D P W purchase and installation of highway maintenance materials. Uh that is the road paving contract for this year.
Okay, thank you, Rob. I just wanted to um
Thank you.
just specify that the S R O is for the same number of S R Os that we that we have um contracted out
Right. Yep.
for the past few years, the one at the high school and the two floating between the middle schools and the elementary schools.
Correct. In the prior year, we had two separate contracts because we had the officer in the high school first and then the two other officers came after. We're under separate contract. This combines the three officers into one contract.
Right, for the first time, then, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now may I have a motion to adjourn the work session and open the town board meeting?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now at our town board meeting. Let's see, uh Rob, do you have any announcements or Christina?
I'm gonna turn it to Christina and she can give uh maybe one last parking reminder before the uh the due date.
Okay.
Due date.
Yes, so our new parking year starts on Monday. Yes, if you have not already applied for your parking permits, please come in or mail them, go online. All parking permits will expire merchants, uh meter and resident standard and non-residents. So please come in, we'll get you um up up online right away. We will be out there enforcing immediately on June sixteenth, just per usual, there's no race period. So please come on in. We've had the renewal um open for about six weeks now. So really, just come on in, we're help happy to help you out. We'll make copies. Just come in with a checkbook and your paperwork.
Okay, and this is the same um parking year that the town has had, yes, long-term, right?
Incredible.
Yes. Yes.
So no one can say that they're not aware.
Yes, um this is for uh there's uh during COVID, we shifted the year.
Anymore.
We slid it a little bit, we're returning to the dates that have been long-standing, probably for fifteen, twenty years at least. And um the notification has gone out directly to the users, push notifications to the app, emails have gone out. Thank you for including it in the annual, I mean, I'm sorry, the weekly newsletter.
Of course.
Uh it's been on two electronic signs, it's on the triangle signs, it's been on yard signs.
Yes, so we've done a lot a lot of advertising, so I hope everyone gets the message and um I hope no one gets a ticket.
The information's.
And if they do, it's not our fault to me.
Yes, 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 please come in.
Please pay promptly.
Um okay, so I just wanna say that we had a really wonderful activity-filled weekend last weekend. We had our Saturday was especially busy. Of course, we had the farmer's market. There was the strawberry festival, there was a baseball game. And um for uh for the town, we had our pride flag raising on Saturday, June seventh. And that was a lovely ceremony. I wanna thank the um the L G B T Q committee. And um we all and uh I wanna thank Chris Burdick, Assemblyman Chris Burdick and um Chair, the Westchester uh Legislature Chair Badagashi for their attendance. And so that was a wonderful ceremony. And uh we also had in the wee hours of Sunday morning, the um Into the Light Sunrise Walk for Mental Resilience sponsored by the Newcastle Committee for Mental Resilience. It was a a very moving time again. We started the walk in the darkness and it ended um in the light and we had some very um, you know, very good information that was shared by a lot of speakers. Jen spoke and uh as a town board councilperson and as liaison to the committee, uh but also in her professional capacity. And we had uh the Boys and Girls Club come and give important information on mental health awareness and um resources. And the school district, Christine Ackerman, the superintendent spoke as well. So it was um.
And Uma Sharma from Horace Greeley High School.
Yes.
Who's the chair of the Mental Awareness Club.
Yes, that's right. And there were um a lot of partners in this this year. We, of course, we had, you know, the Pleasant Fields break the hold was was a partner, the school district partners. We had two school clubs, the Students Against, sad Students Against destructive decision. There is a um students.
Newcastle United for Youth.
Newcastle United for Youth, there was the Student for Mental Wellness Club. The Greeley Varsity Football Team was there, which is really wonderful.
Yeah, the football team was there.
And of course, you know, Chappaqua P T and the Chappaqua Library sponsored it as well. So um a lot of partners this year and it's growing and I really encourage everyone to do it. I am not a morning person and if I can do it, you can do it too. I got there at four fifteen A M um and you know, it's it's timed pretty well. We did get out at six and it was um really moving and special. So I I recommend it and um consider participating next year. Let's see, also I want to highlight that we're going to have a mural reveal next Saturday. Um the town board has been talking about having public art and murals for a very long time. Jeremy, you were on the board when it was first discussed and you know, I'm glad you started that discussion because I think it takes time for things to develop. And uh so you had um, you know, you had artists that you were considering at the time and these were big projects and you know, it 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 gets hard to, you know, follow through. Things happen, you know, COVID, uh things get in the way. But we did pursue it, so I wanna thank you and that prior board for starting that conversation. And I also wanna thank Jen for putting together an amazing arts and culture committee because these are really active people who have made this happen. Um and it took a while, you know, it took a while to find the artists, to have developed the contracts. And I just want I just want people to know that when something like this happens, there's a lot of work that goes on in the background. So I wanna thank the committee members, Joan Chilcraft, the chair, Lori Hoffman, Robert Alasky, Mark Lowenstein, Jessica Meyerwitz, Lisa Disman, Carolyn Simpson and Rachel Samansky. Um they really did a lot of work to make this happen. So we're going to have a bridge gallery reveal celebration uh this Saturday, June fourteenth from eleven thirty to one P M um eh at Allen Place under the Quaker Road Bridge. And you'll get to, the you know, the murals will be revealed and you'll get to meet the artists and have a little celebration. So I hope everyone comes to look at um all this wonderful artwork. And the theme, I I won't give it away, but the theme is community. So I like the way this project developed and it's really about community because the artists have a connection to the community. Um so just wanted to let everyone know about that. And um that's all I have for now. Uh so. And um that's all I have for now. Uh so let's see. Rob, I'll turn it over to you if there is a town administrator's report.
Sure, just a couple items. Uh anybody that's here in the building may have realized our our talented uh building staff. Uh they're working on the renovation of the men's room upstairs. That is the fifth uh five uh bathrooms that they've renovated. They do all that work in-house. Um I think in the past year, we've repainted the walls, I think everyone's noticed. So we're kinda doing some of the minor improvements piecemeal, uh the bathroom uh renovation upstairs is one of them. I just wanted a couple of announcements for uh for the building, so our summer hours have begun. I may have mentioned that before, but I'll just reiterate, uh summer hours, normal hours, Monday through Thursday. But on Friday, we open normal time at eight forty-five, but close the building at three fifteen during the summer. Uh and I also point out that next Thursday, uh June nineteenth, the building is closed for Juneteenth. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Um and our next item of order is um a Pride Month proclamation. June is Pride Month and uh we want to declare that it is Pride Month twenty twenty-five in the town of Newcastle. So we have the proclamation here and I'm going to ask Jen Klein to read it.
So this is the Pride Month proclamation. I move to adopt the following resolution. Whereas the town of Newcastle, New York uphold the value and dignity of each person and champions the rights, freedom and equality of all individuals and families. And whereas all are welcome in the town of Newcastle to live, work, play and deserve to feel a sense of belonging, inclusion and equality and a place to call home where they are safe, happy and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas the town denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender, identity, gender expression, race, color, ethnicity, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, ability, socioeconomic status or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas Pride Month commemorates the Stonewall uprising in New York City, which took place in June of nineteen sixty-nine when lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus, LGBTQ plus and allied friends took a stand for human rights and dignity and fought against police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas LGBTQ plus people have fought for equal treatment, dignity and respect and have achieved significant milestones, ensuring that future generations of LGBTQ plus people will enjoy a more equal and just society. And whereas LGBTQ plus people still face disparities in employment, healthcare, education, housing and many other areas central to the pursuit of happiness in the United States. And whereas the town of Newcastle recognizes the valuable cultural, civic and economic contributions of the LGBTQ plus community, which strengthen our social welfare. And whereas it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender, identity and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas despite being marginalized, LGBTQ plus people continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance and whereas the town of Newcastle reaffirms its commitment to standing in solidarity with LGBTQ plus individuals and families in their ongoing struggle against discrimination and injustice. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of this town declare the month of June twenty twenty-five is LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the town of Newcastle and urge residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ plus community and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty and justice.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Um so we don't really have to vote, this is just a proclamation that we.
It's just a proclamation, but it sounded like you asked for a motion, but.
It it was it was worded that way, but I I think we can we can skip over that.
Yeah.
We're just issuing a a proclamation as we usually do and we don't usually vote on it.
Yeah.
So um okay, thank you very much. And Jeremy, we also have, oh, I just wanna also declare that this is Gun Violence Awareness Month twenty twenty-five in the town of Newcastle. And I'm gonna ask uh a deputy supervisor, Jeremy Salan, to read it. You can skip over the resolution language.
Understood, alright. Whereas every day dozens of Americans are killed by gun violence, leaving countless friends, family members and loved ones heartbroken and traumatized entire communities living in fear of experiencing or witnessing gun violence. And whereas Americans are twenty-five times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other developed countries. And whereas gun violence has serious implications for victims, survivors and their communities and includes but is not limited to gun suicides, gun homicides, domestic violence involving firearm, officer-involved shootings and unintentional shootings. And whereas cities and towns across the nation, including the town of Newcastle, New York, are working to end senseless gun violence. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities we serve is the town board's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas National Gun Violence Awareness Day is commemorated on the first Friday of June this year, on June sixth, which honors the memory of Adia Pendleton, when aged fifteen in two thousand thirteen, was tragically shot and killed in broad daylight one week after performing at President Obama's second inauguration. Adia's friends asked people to wear orange, a symbol of human life, in remembrance of all victims and survivors of gun violence. And whereas throughout the entire month of June, nationally recognized as Gun Violence Awareness Month, we're asked renew our commitment to end gun violence, vowing to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hand and encouraging responsible ownership to help keep our children, families and communities safe. Now therefore be resolved that the members of the town board of the town of Newcastle to hereby proclaim the month of June twenty twenty-five to Gun Violence Awareness Month in the town of Newcastle and urge residents to support their community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence to foster a secure environment for all.
Yay, thank you very much. Alright then. Okay, now we've reached the public comment period. I would like to ask anyone in the audience who has a public comment to please come to the microphone and identify yourself and state where you live. Anyone for public comment today? Oh, okay, let's see if there's anyone online.
No hands are raised online.
No hands are raised online, so okay, so then we will move on. What's next on the agenda? Okay, Rob, do you wanna go over the consent agenda?
Sure. Okay, uh consent agenda is as follows. We have the auth authorization to accept the vehicle auction results for DPW. We have the authorization to purchase anthracite and sand filter media at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. The authorization to purchase the Polar Tech YF air conditioning machine at DPW. The authorization to approve change orders number one and two with weatherproofing technologies through the DPW administration office and central garage roof restoration project. We have the authorization to approve NCCMC's full web services contract addendum for two thousand twenty-five. We have the authorization to settle years twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four tax surchargeary proceedings uh for Millwood Realty Incorporated. Autorization to settle uh the years twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four tax surchargeary proceedings for Gruber. We have the authorization to complete the twenty twenty-four sponsor form for C-VAC LoSAP. The authorization to enter into contract with Wood Hollow Contracting LLC for EV charging units. Uh the authorization to approve the banner request for William Ravis. Authorization to approve the SRO agreement with Chapaguan Central School District. The authorization to accept the cash bond agreement for WCE Real Estate Holdings. And the authorization to renew the annual service agreement with iWork Systems for DPW.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Okay, let's start with the resolutions. Holly, do you wanna start?
Sure.
Rob.
I move to adopt items one through thirteen as listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-eight cents listed on the summary AP check register and detailed voucher detail report, both dated May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of Dylan Ruckstall for the position of Recreation Assistant within the Recreation and Parks Department at the annual salary of fifty-two thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents effective June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of Anthony Ibarra and Beto Colkey for the position of seasonal parks laborer within the Recreation and Parks Department at the hourly rate of twenty dollars per hour effective June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals listed below to serve as recreation attendants within the Recreation and Parks Department at the corresponding rates as indicated below effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um I move to authorize a hi hiring of Michael Ugarte, the politician that we spoke, with the position of the part-time parking enforcement officer with the police department at the hourly rate of twenty-five dollars per hour effective June sixteenth of this year.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh I move to authorize the payment of the Millwood Water Treatment Plant two thousand twenty-five Mike Martis Summer Intern uh Mina Nespoli for the complete duration of her internship retroactively from May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five through August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at which um Viola will reimburse the town twenty hours a week for the length of her internship.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the award of bids for each individual. I have listed the lowest responsible bidders in each item under the DPW twenty twenty-five of two purchase and installation of highway maintenance materials bid for a one-year period from April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six is shown as part of the attached spreads spreadsheet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Votion to, oh, hang on a second, I just, Rob.
Uh Lauren, did we have a a resolution for the Wood Hollow contracting for the EV charging units? Weren't we going to establish the capital project for that this evening?
Yes, I thought it was on the consent agenda.
That's the auth, well, we do we do have an authorization to enter into contract, but you're talking about establishing.
To contract. Establishing the capital project as well as that, um.
Oh, okay, okay.
Can you just create one for us?
Very.
Okay.
I include this it all in one, um.
Okay, I didn't read it that way, so is that okay, Lino, that we do establish the capital project? Okay, I just wanted to confirm that, that was supposed to be all in one resolution, so as far as we.
Okay, so should should we vote on that in concept at this point?
Well, there's the res as as written, you can just say you wanna go back and just amend the resolution to include the capital, that's what I would do. It to include the establishment of the capital project for that.
Okay, so do I have to move, do I wait, do I have to move to retract?
So I move.
No, the first.
Just move to you just move move in to amend that that motion, right? Just make a new motion, amending that prior motion to add the capital.
Let me do it, Lino, in all this.
Sure. Do you have it, Rob, in partying or no? It's part of the consent agenda, it's the.
So it's just the title, right?
It's just right, it's just enter into contract with Wood Hollow Contracting.
Yeah. And establish.
No, it's number nine.
Yeah, number nine, establish in the capital.
And establish.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, that's all. So 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 moved.
Second. Well, we should say say exactly what we're doing as we're making.
Establishing a capital project for the contract for for Wood Hollow contracting for the EV charging units, right?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um good catch, thanks. Okay, um may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, you're adjourned, thank you.